Thank you. Good morning, everyone. It's the nineteenth of June and welcome to the Ordinary Council Meeting for Eastern City Council. The meeting, the time is at nine o'clock. I call attendance in our council meeting. We have councillor Pi Augustine, Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnick, councillor Paul Tully, councillor Andrew Antonelli, councillor David Martin and councillor Jim Madden. I haven't received anything in regards to councillor Madison or councillor Doyle. Has anyone heard anything from them? No, okay, just record this stage that they're, if they don't show, I guess I'll move to do a leave of absence. I'd like to do an acknowledgement of country. And if we see council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share, we pay our respects to the elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. And just before we do the opening prayers, let you know, I think councillor Dennis Chapman from the Fraser Coast Regional Council, I think he's just outside at the moment on the phone, but I think he'll be coming in. I think he's in Ipswich today on some other business and will be joining to, in the public gallery to watch our council proceedings. So if he's still here at morning tea, Tom, I'm sure we could have him join us in the lounge and have a discussion. Thank you. I now move on to opening prayer and invite Reverend Craig Batty from the Ipswich United Church to come up to the lectern to offer us an opening prayer, but also Reverend, if you could let us know a little bit about your church and what your congregation does. Thank you. Honestly, you have your partner Vicky here as well. Thank you. Thank you, Vicky.
Good morning, everybody. So my name is Reverend Craig Batty and I am the Associate Minister at Ipswich Uniting Church. And thank you for inviting me here and also my partner Vicky as well. So I started in February this year along and along with my colleagues Reverend David Fender and Pastor Nyleta Bruce, we have the privilege of ministering with and to the people of Ipswich Uniting Church. Ipswich Uniting Church has a long history as we've grown out of our Methodist, Presbyterian and Congregational traditions before we became the Uniting Church in nineteen seventy seven. We celebrate that anniversary this coming Sunday on the twenty second of June. So we are forty eight years old in Australia. Even though we have a long history at Ipswich Uniting Church, we are a relatively new congregation as we've recently formed from the coming together of four Uniting Church congregations, Brussels, Jacaranda Street, Ipswich Central and Glebe Road. And so I feel that there is a renewed energy, something that drew me to the church was there is a renewed energy in, within the congregation to participate in the, in the life of the city. So as we seek to be a blessing to, to those who work and live and play here in Ipswich. And so thank you again for inviting me to, to open this meeting in prayer. I am grateful for the opportunity. So let us pray. Holy God, we gather here today as servants of our community. And we seek the guidance, your guidance and your wisdom for the members here of Ipswich City Council as they navigate their responsibilities entrusted to them. We ask you, Lord God, for your divine insight as they make decisions that will shape the future of our city. Grant each one the ability to listen to each other with open hearts and minds that they may discern the best path forward for all who work, live and play here in Ipswich. Help each councillor to be mindful of the needs of every resident, especially those who are most vulnerable. Give each one the courage to advocate for justice, for equality, for compassion in all of their deliberations. We pray for unity and understanding that their diverse perspectives may enrich their discussions and lead to solutions that benefit all people. Remind them that their work is not just about policies and budgets, but is it about the lives and well beings of everybody? Lord God, guide their hands, guide their hearts as they strive to create community that reflects your love and your kindness. May their actions this day be a testament to their commitment to serving the common good. We ask this in the name of your son, Jesus, who taught us to love our neighbours as we love ourselves. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Craig Batty, and thank you, Vicky, very much for your time this morning and your blessing. Thank you. We now move on to apologies and leave of absence. I'll just put a place marker there. We'll see what happens with councillor Madison. There are no condolences. There are no tributes. Item seven is the presentation of petitions. And the council has received a petition from Ms Sally Redden on behalf of the residents of Division One concerning the maintenance of Bremavale Park. And the recommendation is that the petition be received and referred back to the relevant council department for investigation report back to the appropriate councillor committee meeting. I'm happy for that to go back to the relevant committee meeting if that's okay. I'm getting some nods here, so I will move that, Vicky, if we could make it to the relevant committee meeting. Do I have a second for that? I think I'll, I'll go to the divisional councillor, councillor Augustine, thank you. We don't normally speak to petitions, but if you would like to, we normally would speak when the report comes back, but I'll leave that up to the councillors. Okay, thank you. In that case, there be no discussion. Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. That's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item eight, presentations and deputations, there are nil. Item nine, public participation, nil. Item ten, matters of public interest. And before I go on to declarations, which is I do like to acknowledge councillor Dennis Chapman from the Fraser Coast Regional Council, who's here, he's got his hand up and waving. Thank you very much councillor Chapman for, for joining us. I understand you here enjoying Ipswich for a day or two. And thank you very much for joining us. And we'll usually break around ten o'clock for morning tea if you'd like to, to join us in the councillor lounge. Thank you. Item eleven, declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. Are there any, I don't, haven't received any prior to the meeting. Are there any declarations? No, but if something does crop up during the discussion, please just let myself know. We go on to item twelve, which is the confirmation of the minutes. And I'm not sure, I think councillor Tully.
Yeah, if, 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 if that's, if that's moved, well then I'll propose the amendment.
Okay, thank you. So item twelve point one is that the minutes of the ordinary meeting on the twenty ninth of May, twenty twenty five be confirmed. So I'll move that. Do you wish to second that councillor Tully? Do you wish to discuss?
Yes.
Just more of it's more of a governance.
Yeah, yes, it is. And it's a, it's a technical change. And if that could be brought up on the screen, please. It's something that might have been happening for some little while, but I'll, I'll just be very brief, that at the moment, there's a principal resolution for each of the committees, each of the six committees being considered today. And that indicates that it was, were put and carried. And then each of the individual items which lie behind that are listed as separate motions with movers, a mover and seconder. And also says on those that the motion was put and carried by block resolve. In the case of the audit committee, for example, even though mayor, you moved previously the adoption of that, it's got you listed as moving fifteen motions in there. So the, the purpose of this amendment is, is simply to, to delete the words by block resolve in the, in, in those subsequent, I'll call them resolutions for the purposes of consideration. Also to, because they weren't individually moved, we, it's to take out the mover and seconder for those. And then to put a heading under, as we used to do previously, a heading, so to identify the items which are embraced by the principal motion. It's just one of those technical things. And I think that probably, that certainly covers it for, for this meeting, for the previous meeting, the adoption of the minutes. But I think the opportunity is there that something like that, and very close to that, if not exactly, that can be used from now on. So that it's quite clear that we, each item wasn't considered separately.
I can also say it's a more accurate record. I believe you've worked with the manager of executive services on this particular resolution.
I did. I sent him an email late yesterday and, and then I spoke again this morning, more importantly, and he acknowledged that it could be clarified. That, that motion that I've only just put out was done after the football last night. So I was quite late when I was working on it. I had to have another look at it and I apologised for that, but it, it's quite technical. I had to go through, as you can see from that and get the, the numbering of the resolutions correct and, and have it right. But yeah, he said that would, that would cover it to make it clear. But then the opportunities there from now on, just, just to make clear that we didn't have, like in, in my case, for example, the committee has got me as moving eight, eight items when I only moved one.
Okay. So can I just make sure that we're looking at, so obviously we'll have the, that the minutes will already be confirmed plus what councillor Tully has, we'll do as the mover, I'm, I'm fine with that. And noting that we'll probably work with the secretariat team on how they can be a bit more streamlined next, next time. Thank you councillor Tully. I'll just wait for that to come up so all the councils can see. Councillor Madison's here. Thank you. Any other errors, amendments, corrections? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Item thirteen is mayoral minute and there is none. Item fourteen is business outstanding and there is none. So we now move on to item fifteen, which is the reception and consideration of the committee reports. And the first one is fifteen point one, the report of the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee of the tenth of June, twenty twenty five. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee councillor, how would you like this report managed?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'd like to move the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee number twenty twenty five zero five of the tenth of June, twenty twenty five for reception and adoption.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Martin. Do you wish to speak to the matter?
If I may, mayor, I'll just speak to a few matters. Particularly in relation to item three, which is the capital investment and provisional projects policy. I just want to commend the councillors for working together collaboratively to put together this policy. This was a review of the policy. Many people in the gallery or maybe watching online would be familiar with the fact that a number of projects are presented to committee and ultimately council that come through this particular policy. They are the work of the divisional councillors and the mayor, suggestions from any councillor for a project, a capital investment or capital works project that may be of benefit to the community, whether it be from a safety or even maybe even an aesthetics point of view. So this policy was due for, for review. It has been reviewed and collaboratively, the changes have been and amendments to that policy have been made. And I just obviously commend that particular item to the councillors for adoption today. I think it's a, a good outcome with respect to that. And obviously we look forward to many projects each year coming through that policy from councillors and the mayor to put forward for consideration. I also wish to just bring up item six as well, Ipswich adopted infrastructure charges, resolution and incentives for two, twenty twenty five. Each year we have to adopt our charges in relation to infrastructure. And that has been a, a topic that's come up over the last few days particularly. But these are our own particular charges that relate to matters pertaining to development. But I also note that in recommendation B, there are a number of new council policies to be included. And they are incentive policies. I read them out individually just for the benefit of those in the gallery and watching. One, the first one is a not-for-profit community organisation incentives policy, rural tourism incentive policy, adaptive reuse of character buildings incentive, incentives policy, hotel and short-term accommodation incentives policy and a housing diversity and affordability incentives policy. Now, each one of those incentive policies are targeting specific areas that we believe as a city we need to address or be more, perhaps a little bit more flexible on to ensure we get the best outcome going forward. I refer specifically to the adaptive reuse of character buildings. Now, that is something that is constantly under discussion for over many, many years to ensure the longevity of some of our great heritage buildings and, and dwellings. So that is, that is just to, I guess, re-emphasise that and look at some new criteria surrounding that. And also the hotel and short-term accommodation incentives policy, obviously in the lead up to the Olympics. And with the number of events that we have in Ipswich, we are particularly the, the large events that secure many thousands and tens of thousands of visitors, we probably do need to create an opportunity for some of those hotel and short-term accommodation venues. And this policy looks to achieve that. And finally, the housing and housing diversity and affordability, incentive policy. Again, that is not just a topic or very topical issue at the moment, but it is certainly something that is, as a council, we are always looking towards. And hopefully these incentives will lead to better outcomes as well. So, and that is all I wish to raise this morning, mayor.
Thank you very much councillor. Councillor Martin is the second. Do you wish to make any comments or discuss the matters?
I'd like to concur with councillor Antonelli. I believe our city has so much to offer and we certainly have a lack of tourist accommodation, overnight stays, and I would certainly like to incentivise that. I'd once again like to say I'd love to see high rows in our CBD. I'd like to see accommodation for people to go to Willowbank, to our festivals, even Ipswich Cup. That there's a greater array of opportunities for people to stay here and spend money in our CBD and in our city. Thank you.
Well, I hope, I hope you find that these policies will assist that.
Absolutely.
I'll open it for any other discussion? No?
No, oh, sorry.
I'd like to just make some commentary on some of the matters. And I did this at the time when we had the committee, but this is the ordinary, so I'll, I'll repeat some of these. In, we had two petitions that, that came forward and I always welcome petitions. It's an important part of our democracy and our transparency. There was a petition, a responsible petition requesting another dog park for Goodna. Whilst there is one dog park in Goodna, it's on the north side of the Ipswich motorway. And there was a, a recommendation for one just south of there. So council will get back to them. I would like to see if we could look at that in the future. There's also a response to a petition for the widening of the northern section of Goddard's Road in Manto. And council did come back talking about what, how council will be addressing that. But is it costly exercise? And obviously it doesn't have a great deal of traffic, but we obviously, myself and the divisional councils have been approached many times about this. So we, we take on that commitment to look at widening that northern section of Goddard's Road for future consideration for future capital works. For the capital investment provisional projects policy, I was pleased to see these amendments. I welcome these changes to the policy which will allow for greater oversight. We have had instances where different divisions are working on similar projects at the same time, but not knowing that each other were doing that. So this new policy will open up the process and allow to find efficiencies in the projects that we are delivering on behalf of our community. I welcome the continuation of funding to support provisional projects in each division. And through these changes, the opportunity for every councillor, including the mayor, as well as the community, to champion projects under this new process. Under this updated policy, the community can now reach out to either myself directly or any councillor to put forward projects they believe will be of the greatest benefit to the community. The updated policy provides an improved framework, improved governance and greater transparency around how provisional projects are determined and delivered. And I look forward to reading the draft procedure that will sit alongside this policy, I think, at an upcoming meeting. Also note the asset and infrastructure services department's capital delivery report as we come into the end of the financial year. And after tropical cyclone Alfred, council was able to catch up achieving a ten point seven million spend compared to the budget five point five million spent. So that was great to see those works to be done considering the delays caused by the cyclone. At that meeting too, the general manager explained the different methods used to fill potholes depending on whether the, the pothole itself is wet or dry. And the fact that when it is a wet pothole, we have to use the cold mix, which obviously doesn't last as long versus the hot mix. So, and we obviously keep, maintain, look at those and, and maintain that. And I also see the stage one design has now been completed for the drain, stage drainage mitigation at Champions Way, Willowbank as well. In regards to item six, which is the adopted infrastructure charges resolution incentives for twenty twenty five. These new, this new resolution and incentives is a lever that we can pull to assist those who are struggling to get into the housing market. What this new Ipswich adopted infrastructure charges resolution does is allows the council to put its best foot forward by making sure the prescribed amount is the maximum adopted charge. This is well overdue considering the ever-growing black hole in infrastructure, in the infrastructure that we have. The state government set the infrastructure charges cap, which has not been appropriately indexed since it was introduced in twenty eleven. And this is placing enormous pressure on us as a council of one of the fastest growing areas in the state. So with all the development we are seeing, a significant funding gap will still exist even with this increase. What this revised charges and incentive signal to the market is that we want to do something different. We want to encourage development diversity and with our new planning scheme paving the way with appropriately zoned land and the provision for medium and high-density dwellings in locations close to existing public transport. The council incentives package for twenty twenty five will include a new incentive, the housing diversity and affordability incentive policy. What this policy will do is promote the delivery of diverse housing and affordable housing to bring forward multiple unit dwellings. Council will provide up to five million dollars in relief over four years in total for multiple dwelling projects that can be delivered by the thirty third of June, twenty twenty nine. This incentive will sit alongside the hotel and short-term accommodation incentives policy, which aims to meet Ipswich's need for tourism accommodation and cater for major events like the Brisbane twenty thirty two Olympic and Power and Bit Games. This incentive promotes the delivery of integrated hotels with a minimum of fifty rooms and a minimum of three storeys that will also include a restaurant and conference facilities to be delivered by mid twenty twenty nine. So very much support this and great to see the organisation. And, and I thank the councils for working on this. I know this is something we've been working on for a number of years. That's great to see this coming forward. I'll open it for other discussion. Councillor Tully.
Yeah, thanks, mayor. Just one item I wish to speak to, that's item one about the petition about an additional off-leash dog park in Goodna.
Thank you.
The current one on Brisbane Terrace is accessible under the highway, but it's right on the northern part of Goodna. It's easily accessible, probably more easily in some ways for the people of Gales, just across from Old Logan Road and straight down to where the facility is. But the recommendation from the officers which is being recommended for adoption today raises the issue about the desired standards of, of, of leash dog parks for the two sites, the one there and the alternative one which was raised when that petition was considered previously. And I, I think the main petitioner came in in relation to Warren Park at the corner of Church Street and Alice Street at Goodna. It also raises the issue of land which is buyback land, and this has been raised before. And that's been identified. It's, it's pretty obvious in those flooded suburbs where the buybacks are, where there's bollards in front of these blocks. One of the difficulties is, and it's a cost to council and it's a cost to other councils, in, in mainly in southeast Queensland. These small blocks have to be maintained by the council and, and mode. Sometimes you've got a situation of one, two or three blocks which are now vacant. And then a house which is not part of the buyback, which, which prevents development, for example, sporting development or even development like this. One of the issues, it's in, in Mill Street, it's still very close to dwellings which are there. But most councils in southeast Queensland, it was great, the buyback, and we've previously supported having that extended by the Commonwealth and state governments, so that the opportunity is there for ongoing buybacks in flood areas, in, in affected local government areas in Queensland. But the issue for us is as a council, the ongoing costs of maintaining these blocks unless an appropriate community purpose can be found. You know, it's a matter which, it's early days at the moment, but I think all effective councils will face this same issue of the rising cost in maintaining these very small blocks to, to mow. Whether it's, as I say, for sporting development or, or otherwise, and that, that would be one example, particularly if it's close to an existing sporting area. But it's unfortunate that neither of these properties at the moment are suitable for an off-leash dog park. But as you said, always keen to see if there's any other opportunities in the Goodna area for this facility. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tully. Open it up for any other discussion? There's no one speaking against it councillor, but if you'd like a right of reply?
No, I just thank everyone for their comments in relation to it. And I note that obviously we did have a couple of petitions, sometimes then when a petition is not necessarily supported by council, it doesn't mean that that's the end of the matter. There can always be ongoing discussions and maybe solutions to those matters through other processes.
Thank you councillor. Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item fifteen point two, which is the report of the Finance and Governance Committee of the tenth of June, twenty twenty five. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee councillor, how would you like this report managed?
Yes, mayor, I'll move that the Finance and Governance Committee report number two thousand and twenty five zero five be received and the recommendations contained therein be adopted with two changes, two minor changes. Firstly, on page ninety two, item eight, which goes on to page ninety three, this is in B two. At the B two, to, to, B two, capital B two on page ninety three, to delete the words an initial term, just, just for a term of two years with no options for extension. This, this comes up, I think, because we're using templates and that wording is appropriate if, if it's an ongoing possibility of an extension which is not. And a similar situation in relation to item ten, B two at the top of page ninety five, to read for a term rather than an initial term of twenty years with no options for extension.
So I'm just going to make sure that these minutes, do you believe that these minutes do not accurately reflect the decision of the meeting?
No, th- those minutes are the, are the correct recommendation as adopted, but I'm just moving the adoption of that with those two variations.
Okay, let me just check the paperwork. So item seven is the lease renewal of a freehold land. So may I, may I suggest, do you want to move all items except for items seven and nine?
I'll, I'll move them all together as one motion, but with the variation, the two variations to the wording of the recommendations.
So you're looking at
A number eight.
B two, yep.
Eight.
I'm looking, I'm looking at page ninety two, B two, which is.
Ninety three, it's, it's now on, it, it starts on page ninety two, but at the top of page ninety three, under capital B, Roman numerals two.
Oh, that one, the visual she is.
Just a point of order. Does that make that consistent then with the, with a similar recommendation in item seven? The B, B two in item seven, it says for a term of?
No, that, that's correct. Yeah, well, it makes.
Does it make it consistent, does it?
So, so councillor Tully, my understanding is the first one you mentioned was page ninety two. You said B two, is that correct?
The item starts on page ninety two, but the, the actual wording rolls over to page ninety three.
I'm just looking at what we actually. I'm just looking at what we actually approved. I could just see it was on the screen.
I believe it was and it had that initial term.
You'll need to keep term, Vicky. Yep. That's, that is what is in the council paper. Are you saying that that was removed at the council meeting?
No, no. Can I just, during the course of this meeting, I mentioned to the CEO that there was the first one and then for some reason it wasn't sort of changed at the meeting. But that is correct, what the committee had recommended. But what I'm, the motion I'm moving is to adopt all of those with those two changes.
Okay. So you just wanted to remove an initial, the words an initial?
And put in the word A, sorry, A term of two years.
Okay.
Like the case that councillor Antonelli has mentioned on page ninety, it just says for a term
Okay.
of ten years with no options for extension.
Nice. I don't, let me just check here. You're moving that, so we haven't come to, councillor Doyle's seconding that. So removing an initial term in item eight, B two. So it just says for a term of two years?
Yes.
And there was a second one?
Item ten on page ninety five. Oh, well, actually, sorry. No, can I go? That was, you'll notice in the minutes, I'll just vary that. If you go over the page to page ninety six, that has got the actual recommendation in bold type. Again, it's got the word initial. So if I could vary that, the wording appears twice because you recall there was a closed meeting to discuss that item.
So can I just check, it's item ten?
Item ten.
And it'll be recommendation B two. You wish to remove the word an initial and just have a term?
Yeah, but that's on page ninety six.
Correct, that's on page ninety six, yes. I'm just making sure that, I'll just allow the minute clerk to adjust that. Thank you. And I can see councillor Doyle seconded that. While we're doing that, councillor Tully, do you wish to speak to the report?
Yes, please. Firstly, there's four items which I'll talk to together and they're simple items. They're items five, six, seven and nine. And there are lease, leases, lease renewals or leases for mobile phone towers around the city. Two at Willow Bank, one at Collingwood Park, one at Race View, one at Bellbird Park. You can see from the, it's an opportunity for council to garner some revenue with most of these leases for a period of ten years. It's a, you know, an opportunity to garner some revenue in areas which are not being used by council and which are providing the mobile phone tower facility throughout the community. That ties in with what we've tried in the past and the Local Government Association, the black spots which still exist, not in rural and remote areas only, but in built up areas in our communities, in urban areas. There are still a lot of black spots. There's a new tower that's recently opened on Jones Road at Bellbird Park. This, this one is near the corner of where Bellbird Park starts at service station at the corner on Red Bank Plains Road. So they're almost identical, the recommendations, and I think it's an opportunity for council to even explore that because the companies involved are prepared to pay reasonable amounts for, for the use of those facilities for a period of time. The next item is the item eight, which is the lease and contract renewal for the management and operation of the Cafe Laguna at Rebeldamaine at Southern Cross Circuit at Springfield Central. This is for a period of two years. They are the current holders of this lease area. It's a facility that's certainly widely used in, in summer, in the heart of Springfield Central, and that is to renew that. And that's an ongoing then opportunity after that to call for expressions of interest for a contract renewal after that initial period of time of two years. There's another item ten, which had some considerable discussion, all very positive in relation to a new lease over freehold land for community housing initiative. And I'm very pleased that the recommendation is that we enter into an agreement with the Domestic Violence Action Centre Incorporated here in Ipswich at an annual rent of one dollar for the provision of a facility for housing families recovering from domestic and family violence. I think it's a, an excellent recommendation and it shows that this council is proactive in assisting to provide these facilities in our community. They're very much needed. It was a very detailed discussion, very positive and I thank all the council was involved in that. There were no expressions of concern or opposition to this. And I think as a community, we can hold our heads up high that we are doing all we can in relation to this very sensitive issue within our community. Item twelve, that's, and I raised this, so I'll be brief, but at the committee meeting, the consistency review of local laws and our new planning scheme, which comes into effect in a bit over ten days on the first of July. There were six items of local laws or subordinate local laws which required amendment to bring them into harmony with the new planning scheme. And the recommendation is that following the fact that there were no, no public submissions, no submissions from the public in relation to this proposal, that that will proceed and they will come into effect when the new scheme is adopted. Just finally, Mayor, is the report from the Regulation Advisory Committee in the same vein. The major matter that we're looking at at the moment is the review of our local laws and subordinate local laws. There's going to be, has been consultation through Shape Your Ipswich for a period of four weeks, getting the feedback from the community about our local laws, what our local law should be now and perhaps even into the future. There'll be another meeting of the committee to look at the results of the survey. And in this recommendation today, or in the discussion then, noted on page one hundred and one, we've asked the General Manager of Corporate Services to review the timeline so that the actual nitty gritty of what we're going to do, looking at local laws, mending local laws, new local laws, rewriting local laws in relation to standard sort of terminology which is used in legal documents now is compressed so that we are on to that aspect of the task as soon as possible, probably early next year. But that will be a long process, involve the community, looking at those local laws, which will be quite interesting. Because I've given some, one particular example in the past, which is an issue in Sydney and it's possibly something unless under nuisance local laws where people sometimes with electric vehicles or caravans, parking them on roads and running electricity cables from a house sometimes to the top of a tree and then down the tree into the, into the vehicle or into the caravan, whatever it may be. It's those sorts of things that, what are relevant now, what are relevant in the past twenty or thirty years ago may no longer be relevant. But we also need to look at the emerging need for local laws for an emerging community such as Ipswich. I'd like to thank the members of the committee for that because we are now, I guess hastening slowly is the probable way of describing that. And, you know, we should have some real meat in terms of our considerations in the first half of next year.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Doyle is a seconder. Do you wish to comment on the report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just would like to specifically mention, I think it was item seven, councillor Tully's already spoken to the mobile coverage, the towers, several of them whilst it's, so it is a great opportunity for council to earn some income. And obviously plugging some of those black spots with regard to mobile phone coverage, that's amazing. Just wanted to sort of note, and we did discuss this during committee, that it does present an amenity issue for some residents sometimes. So it was great to have that discussion with, with the council officer. Certainly one of the factors we consider before entering into the lease, although we cannot one hundred percent determine the, the location of the tower. Obviously, it's, the purpose is to plug a, a black spot. But just for residents, amenity, we, we hear you. And yeah, good opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Doyle. Open up for the councillors to discuss the, councillor Antonelli?
Yeah, just, just a question in relation to four point one. The, there was a request to the General Manager of Development Department.
The Chair, yeah. I'll be raising that there was a matter on notice that councillor Tully raised. Question of timeframe for four financial statements, twenty three, twenty four. And this finished letter to come before the committee. I've just checked with the CEO then and that letter hasn't been circulated yet, so it's still a matter on notice for the organisation to come back to us.
Yeah, because it has been in inordinate period of time.
Thank you. Anything else? I'd like to speak to item one of that report, which is the procurement strategic contracting and the associated framework documents. And the manual provides a guide to achieve efficient and effective procurement outcomes for council by setting out a very clear and consistent approach to deliver the best value for rate payers. Local businesses are to be approached for quotes for goods and services under fifteen thousand dollars and contracts over two million dollars require a council resolution. The buy Ipswich policy, which I think came out in our second or third meeting in twenty twenty two, referenced the procurement and contracts manual, providing preferential factors, including a request for quotes up to fifty thousand dollars from suitably qualified local businesses in the first instance. And include at least one suitable qualified local business when sourcing goods and services when it's greater than fifty thousand dollars. Additionally, local economy support will be weighted at fifteen percent during the evaluation process. A comprehensive procurement plan, the annual contracting plan, or what I call is the council's order book, will be, will propose procurement activities greater than five hundred thousand dollars and will come before the full council for adoption. Which will provide greater transparency to council and to the community on how we are spending rate payers' funds. It's great to see the significant contracting plan template has been developed to ensure there is a consistent and compliant approach to significant contracts. The annual contracting plan will be moved to a resolution on the first of July after the budget as per legislative requirements. Overall, I think these improvements to our procurement framework strengthen our procurement capabilities and improve efficiency while also improving our governance and transparency. Item ten, which was spoken of earlier about the new lease of a freehold land for community housing initiatives. It's great to see, I'm a huge supporter of D VAC and the work that they do and the vital work they do in our community. And also, I'm also a champion for open and transparent process in government. So we did have a discussion at that committee meeting about the, the lack of engagement with councillors on this important matter. And we also decide, had a discussion on the organisation's setting criteria and processes so we can let any community group know about how land is available. But look, it's hard to deny the vital, important work that D VAC does for our Ipswich community and the support that they offer victims of domestic, family and sexual violence. Domestic and family violence is a scourge in our society and D VAC's advocacy, crisis and support services are on the front line every single day, every night of keeping Ipswich residents, especially our women, safe. So I strongly support that particular part of that report. I'll open up for any other discussion. councillor Doyle?
Thank you, Mayor. I, just looking at the CEO, the matter that you've just referred to, the, the lease in relation to D VAC was a confidential attachment. So I don't believe the purpose of the building or what it will be used for was actually a matter for public record.
That's correct.
Or the location, correct.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Item twelve on the consistency review, the local laws, there were eighteen key changes identified in seven of council's local laws in the review to ensure our local laws align with the new planning scheme. These changes were put before the community so that they could have their say on the proposed changes that Shape Your Ipswich pages had. And they've had one thousand two hundred and thirty five reviews, but no form of submissions were made. So the community were given another opportunity to comment on local laws more broadly when the more comprehensive review is undertaken at a later date. Like I said, the majority of changes relate to changing definitions to align with the new planning scheme and minor word changes to provide clarity and minor changes to adhere to drafting standards and local laws. I also note that we went into general business on that particular meeting. And we had a close session to discuss the progress on the proposed lease with Swift's League Club as well. I'll open up for any other discussion? No? councillor Tully? Yes, I know no one spoke against it, but if you want to write a pop?
Yeah, just very briefly, thank, thank you and councillor Doyle, in relation to your comments. In relation to that item ten, the paragraph A of the recommendation, which is a public document, identifies the purpose of that lease for families recovering from domestic and family violence. Because Domestic Violence Action Centre Inc. is a community organisation, that's just reading from the report, which is a public document. But councillor Doyle's correct that the location, for obvious reasons, is always kept confidential by this council, but not the purpose. Can I just make a, councillor Doyle also raised the matter about the mobile phone towers. Interestingly enough, I've seen the whole transition of no mobile phone towers in the city to mobile phone towers continuing to be erected. In early days, there was a lot of opposition to mobile phone towers in suburban areas, particularly near schools, particularly near childcare centres. That probably still exists. But I think the community, as the percentage of people with mobile phones has increased enormously over the past twenty, twenty five years or so. The community wants more towers for more reliable, particularly five G coverage. So it's not unusual now for there to be very little opposition, depending upon the exact location to any mobile phone tower which is proposed in our city.
Thank you very much. Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item fifteen point three, the report of the Sport and Committee, sorry, the report of the Community and Sport Committee of the tenth of June twenty twenty five. Councillor Madison, as the Chair of that committee, how would you like this report managed?
As per the recommendation in today's meeting agenda.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second for that? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll hand over to you, councillor Madison. Nothing to comment? Deputy Mayor, do you have anything, any comments?
No, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item fifteen point four, which is the report of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee of the tenth of June twenty twenty five. To the Chair of that committee, councillor Augustine, how would you like this report managed?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that the Economic and Cultural Development Committee, number two thousand and twenty five dash zero five of the tenth of June, be, I recommend the items be received and the recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Antonelli. Councillor Augustine, do you wish to speak to the report?
Thank you, Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to, there's a couple that I'd like to speak on. Firstly, item two, which is the Spark Ipswich two thousand and twenty five Festival of Arts and Cultural Programme. Just the preview, so the, the Spark Festival will be happening on the, from the eleventh of July to the twentieth of July. We've got sixty seven artists and fifty, sixty five performers across fifty two events, which is an enormous effort. And I thank the, the whole team for putting this event on, another great festival. The Ipswich Spark Festival is an annual arts and cultural festival which is designed to showcase and celebrate our people, places and arts and the culture of our city. One of the things that, there's a whole heap of different things that happen through the Spark Festival. So I won't go through them, but if everyone, we've got this nice little handy booklet that's got everything that we want to know about Spark. So but I must say, there's one thing that also I'm really looking forward to is the fifty year celebration of our Heart of Arts and Culture in our city, which is the civic centre fiftieth year anniversary. So hopefully everyone's go, will go to that. So I thank again the officers for that report. I also like to speak on item three, which is the City of Ipswich Economic Update. Mayor, glad to report once again that our GRP reached over fifteen billion dollars and the year to the end of June twenty four, which reflects a four point two percent growth in our city. And comparing to the other local LGAs, Moreton Bay had two point four, Gold Coast had one point nine six growth, Logan, two point four, and with ours at four point two, I think our city is punching away above its weight. I'll just add a little bit, I was at the chambers last night and there was also another report done there. Ipswich, the reports, the figures for us are just absolutely brilliant. And, you know, we should all be proud of that. So I just want to commend, you know, everyone that has put this report together. So I just want to commend, um, you know, everyone that has put this report together. Um, the the figures that are in it just um, add to a um, you know, a thriving city. I also want to um, point out that um, after the the federal election was held on May, resulting in uh, two, two hundred and sixteen point nine million dollars worth of commitments for Ipswich that will be delivered uh, by the newly appointed federal government, which includes two hundred million dollars committed towards our advocacy priorities for critical and enabling infrastructure, namely the um, Ambley interchange. So um, really proud of that. So hopefully we can get moving on that. So that that is good for that. Um, that report, so, but the last thing I want to um, talk upon is the Better Late Report, which was um, just about the, it's just a, the report on our um, Nicholas Street Precinct. Um, again, we had um, some really good, good wins in there. We've got Vapianos, which will be opening shortly, um, the end of August. You're like, you're past a councillor Tully, me too. Um, so, uh, so that'll be opening. There's a couple of more um, um, uh, tenants, uh, we're, we're still working on some um, leases there that haven't come to fruition just yet. But overall, May recorded a strong visitation, um, numbers, a hundred and sixty nine thousand, reflecting a three point six year um, increase. So um, yeah, the annual tr- foot traffic is at one point s- seven, two million. So a good, great numbers in all around in the whole report, Mayor. So um, yes, I'm very pleased with what, how, how our city's tracking.
Thank you, councillor Augustine. Councillor Madden, as the seconded, do you wish to speak to the the report?
Yeah, I, I, well, more so with respect to uh, the Civic Centre and quite excited by the fact that we'll, we will be celebrating fifty years. I do um, as a long term resident, born and bred here in Ipswich, I have very fond memories of the Civic Centre. Uh, it has become the part of um, my life, as it has many people here in Ipswich, who have potentially attended wedding receptions, school formals, um, their own um, um, events there, but also having tread the boards and been in the, what, the backstage area of uh, of the Civic Centre. It is, in many respects, a magical place, uh, and it's, it has its place here in the centre of Ipswich. And to think that um, it was opened by um, the uh, then Prime Minister Gough Whitlam, who then attended some ten years ago for the fortieth anniversary, I believe, um, as well. So, and I think he was uh, very proud to see that it was still standing at that time. Um, one of the unique things about the Civic Centre, um, that many people wouldn't know, um, that for a centre of its size, it has um, probably the most number of flies for the stage area. Now, what does that mean? That means that it has twenty eight flies, and that means that for many shows, uh, be they performances or um, theatre productions, the options were virtually endless. The the ability to use twenty eight flies for, for um, staging, props and backgrounds, um, made it a very attractive venue for that type of thing. So it is a very unique venue in many respects, um, but it has become part of our city. And the only thing I feel a little bit melancholy about is that I'm older than the um, Civic Centre. So um, and I do not recall what was there before. I do know what was there, but I don't have any recollection of it.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, Antonia, and I also note in that uh, report, I think during that meeting, you raised a a general business item in regards to the projection facade in the Nicholas Street Precinct, and the question that traders have been offered the site as advertising space. I was just checking with the C E O that I think that work is still underway, if I could.
That's correct, Mayor. I'm looking to close that out later today. It's a little bit complex, but I'll be writing.
I'm aware that the C E O's had other things on her mind, so I wasn't pressing that issue.
Thank you. Thank you. I won't speak to any other matter, because I think councillor Augustine was so comprehensive in your, your report, but Deputy Mayor?
Oh, I just wanted to reiterate um, what um, councillor Augustine was saying in relation to our economic um, update. And just touching on the local jobs and the growth um, for the jobs in the Ipswich region is um, there was a three point eight percentage change, which is ahead of the Queensland average as well. So it's great to see that um, the city is harnessing the ability for our residents to, to work and, and stay and play in the city that they live in. So it's um, yeah, it's a great report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commentary? Yes, councillor Tully?
Thanks, Mayor. And uh, those comments about the Civic Hall, no, I wasn't a councillor or alderman at the time, uh, it was originally open, but not long afterwards. But it certainly has been um, a major facility for, for this city, as theatre productions, schools, weddings, birthdays and things like that. Um, I remember at one stage, and I may have mentioned this in the past, uh, it was dubbed by the um, uh, deputy mayor at the time, councillor um, Georgie Conway, as the uh, uh, the most expensive bingo palace in Queensland. Because bingo was played there, in fact attracted most of the revenue at the time, most nights of the week. Um, it was very popular, but that was, that was in the days when uh, smoking was allowed. Um, it wasn't prohibited in in buildings, and we took the initiative, um, I guess back in the nineteen eighties to ban smoking there, which saw the bingo, um, bingo games uh, drop off quite significantly to fine venues where. It's hard to believe that that's only in a fairly short period of time. But one, um, people can talk about the highlights. I remember, you might call this a low light, but I still remember the time Rodney Rude um, appeared there. The night before, he'd been arrested in Caloundra by the state police um, for uh, various uh, words that are used in that performance. So the next night when he was in Ipswich, we had the state and national media there. And I'm not able to describe how he handled that, that arrest and the use of various words for obvious reasons. But I'll tell people privately, but it was a, a very interesting evening when two police officers were at the back of the audience with a tape recorder. And uh, Rodney Rude had uh, some very direct uh, comments uh, uh, to, to make. So uh, I'll see people privately and just remind them. But it's been a very interesting building, but putting that aside, it's been a fantastic facility for our city. Um, yeah, right in the heart of the city. And that was at one stage, that site, and I can't remember, a site for the Moretonshire council offices and the service station there on, on that corner. In the, in the days when Moretonshire, um, it was like a doughnut shire or very close to it, where their uh, building before they went to Yamato uh, was uh, on that corner. So very prominent, a lot of people would re- remember that. So I'm certainly supportive of the appropriate celebration on the fiftieth anniversary.
You should speak to again, councillor Antonia?
If I may, if I may.
You know I always allow this?
I, I just, just wish to remind everybody of that wonderful purple carpet that the uh, Civic Centre opened with, and um, was very glad that we were able to replace that sometime in the early um, two thousands.
It was the seventies. Um, if there's nothing else, I will then hand over to councillor Augustine. No one spoke against it, but do you wish to have a writer, have a writer reply?
No, ma'am. Everyone said great words. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Um, I'll now move on to item um, fifteen point five, which is the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee of the tenth of June twenty twenty five. I'll hand over to the committee chair for that, councillor Madden. How would you like this report managed?
Um, thanks very much, Mayor. I move that the council adopt the recommendations of the Environment and Sustainability Committee Report, number two thousand and twenty five oh five of ten, June two thousand and twenty five.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Madden, do we wish to speak to the report?
Yes, um, councillor, uh, Mayor, I'd like to deal with item two. The Ipswich Environment, Environment, Enviro Plan Strategic Investment Plan Report. Um, firstly, I'd like to thank the council officers who prepared this very detailed report. Uh, this is a report concerning the Enviro Plan Strategic Investment Plan, which guides the future revenue and strategic investment priorities for the Ipswich Enviro Plan Levy. This report summarises the programme's successes and achievements over almost thirty years, since its inception, and the strategies for the next ten years to further increase our city's green future through Enviro Play- Plan. The Enviro Plan Levy continues to be a much supported and vital tool for council and the city of Ipswich in preserving and enhancing the environmental and cultural values of our great city, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, deputy mayor, do you wish to speak to the matter? No, thank you. I'll look at speaking to it, I, as well to report number two, um, uh, councillor Madden, uh, on the Ipswich Enviro Plan Strategic Investment Plan. Uh, council has secured more than seven thousand five hundred hectares of native bushland within dedicated conservation estates and reserves, as well supporting more than one hundred conservation partners with protecting and enhancing ecosystems on the private property, thanks to the Enviro Plan Levy. The conservation outcomes that councillor choose through Enviro Plan continue to be vital to our city's green future. Over the next ten years, council will look to acquire land suitable for receiving offsets, creating corridor connections, increasing city greening and expanding native bushland areas across the city. It's also interesting to see how we compare to other southeast Queensland councils, and we are among the lowest, and we have among the lowest environmental levies. And unlike most other councils, each city council manages the vast majority of publicly owned natural areas and bushland in Ipswich, as we do not have a dedicated national park. Any other comments? Councillor Madden, as the writer reply?
Just a short reply, Mayor, and it's because of the discussions we had about the Civic Centre, talking about our great history of our, our fine city. And I'd just like to thank the uh, councillors in, who in nineteen ninety six introduced um, the Enviro Plan Levy. Uh, as a proactive way to preserve the um, natural bushland in Ipswich. They foresaw at the time the great growth that we're currently experiencing and our council is dealing with. And with their, because of their great foresight, um, the programme has delivered six thousand seven hundred hectares of conservation and estates and reserves, Mayor. So it's been a highly successful programme, and I congratulate those councillors back in nineteen ninety six. So that include you, councillor Tully.
Thank you.
Our interesting times.
I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. It is now nine fifty nine, so I'll call for an adjournment to uh, ten thirty. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. See you back at ten thirty.
Thank you. Good morning. It's ten thirty on the nineteenth of June twenty twenty five. Welcome back. And just want to thank councillor Dennis Chapman from Fraser Crest Regional Council, who joined us for morning tea. We had a great discussion about many things, including housing diversity and sporting fields and so on. So thank you very much councillor Chapman for your time and thank you for the councillors for making him so welcome. We are item number sixteen and the officer's report is sixteen point one is the CEO organisational performance report for May twenty twenty five. So I'll move that the CEO's organisational performance report for the month of May twenty twenty five be received and the contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Martin.
I had a question, may?
Oh yes, sorry, I will go into that, sorry. I should usually open up for questions.
Yeah, no, sorry.
Before speaking to it, I'll open up for questions. Are there questions of the CEO in this report?
Yes, may I just, in relation to the grant funding communicated to the organisation, one of the grant fundings is celebrating multicultural Queensland grant programme, which closes on the thirtieth of June. It's, I'm just wondering if we'd put in for that grant at all.
Is it listed in the report?
Yeah, it just said it's, it's shared for stakeholders in council for our consideration. It's on page.
Page one hundred and twenty nine?
Nine, yes.
It's got grant opportunities communicated to the organisation, celebrating multicultural Queensland grants programme from the state government and it closes on the thirtieth of June. So your question is, is council putting in a grant?
So through you, mayor's chair, because this is a report for May, it doesn't include the outcome or any applications made that will come next month. And I don't happen to know off the top of my head unfortunately whether an application was made, but happy to take that on notice and.
A question on notice.
And come back to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions of this report? Thank you. Then as the mover, like to commend the organisations on the new planning scheme and the local government if such a plan, which was adopted, unlocking the construction of one hundred thousand affordable homes over the next twenty years. Ipswich City Plan twenty twenty five places a two decade old scheme and promotes building up not out and establishing homes in areas supported by transport and essential services. And that plan will come in effect on the first of July. I also note that council are managing the revamped community centre at Goodna after it has now been restored following the twenty twenty two floods. Council's popular and affordable active and healthy programme runs out of the centre, offering boxing, Pilates, mobility, yoga and Zumba. And I think any other community groups who'd like to use it are very welcome to contact council as a great centre. Following on the construction of a large new culvert and major drainage upgrades addressing past flooding issues, the road surface of Adalong Avenue at The Guna is, hooray, now being upgraded and the new road surface is expected to be completed by the end of the year. We also had a good response to our community engagement with our resource recovery experience survey, which has been open for just over a month. We asked residents to complete a survey or attend one of our pop-ups at Red Bank Plains, Goodna, Brussel and Ipswich Central, and nine hundred seventy four people did just that. And we asked the community to give us feedback on current recycling experiences and ideas for better promoting the correct use of recycling services. And almost two thousand eight hundred people visited our Shapir Research page on that. Also pleased to see that the council has been successful in four grant applications for May. The All In Active Australia Innovation Challenge Grant for the Heart Foundation will see thirty thousand dollars in funding go towards projects that promote physical activity, improve health, heart health. We have been successful in extending our illegal dumping partnerships grant project with an additional ninety thousand dollars. And the SES, both Goodne SES and Ipswich SES, are receiving grants. The Goodne SES is receiving a gate upgrade and the Ipswich SES is having a shed replacement. So that's a grant of a hundred and seventy six thousand six hundred and eighty four dollars. So that's great to see. Councillor, you should speak to.
When you're ready.
I think councillor Martin as the second, do you wish to speak to the report?
No, thanks, ma'am. Thank you.
I think CEO, you have to say.
Thank you, Mary, if I can, just in the interests of being responsive. The wonderful team has telegraphed to me a message in terms of the question that councillor Augustine posed. So we do have an application in progress for that particular grant programme closing thirty June. It's currently being prepared, reviewed, and we're looking to apply for the World of Music Ipswich Festival.
The Womi?
The Womi, that's right. That's what we're currently looking as a good contender, given the eligibility criteria for that particular grant programme. And we'll be able to provide more details on that as the application's finalised. Yep.
Thank you. Are you satisfied that council listening?
Thank you, CEO.
Thank you. I'll consider that question on notice to be answered and completed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other discussion on this report? No, in that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Sixteen point two is a procurement matter and preferred supply arrangements of arboretal culture services. I just note that this, that there is some confidential, there are some confidential attachments. If councils wish to discuss those, we do need to go into closed session because they are commercial in confidence about contracts and so on and details. Any questions on item sixteen point two, councillor Tilly?
Yes, thank you. Well, maybe it's more in an operational vein, this question, more so than the actual procurement or mention the contract itself. No, I won't be. But it's more about the service provision and whether or not this will, just, I guess, a question on notice to the CEO, if she can answer now or at a further time, whether or not this, this arrangement, this procurement will assist us in bringing down the long list of the backlog that we have in the arbicultural services area.
Thank you, ma'am. I think it is best that I take that one on notice and we can provide an update on how we're tracking operationally to all councillors. I do note that the, without going into any confidential details, from my understanding and experience, there are more providers on the list, which is welcome. So thank you, ma'am.
I'm happy with that. Thank you, ma'am.
Happy with that question on notice. Thank you. Are there any other questions? In that case, I will move item sixteen point two, recommendations A through to E. Do I have a second? I think you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion on the matter? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Item sixteen point three is a procurement matter, the procurement of the Riverlink and Bradfield Bridge reconstruction. Again, I know there are confidential attachments. So if anyone has any questions, so are there any queries or questions on this matter?
I have a question, but it's not, not, I don't believe to be confidential.
Ask away.
For the relevant officer.
Yep. What's it regarding the procurement process or the technical side?
Just some of the details of the work that needs to be done. Just a very quick question.
So just, I think I'm seeing the general manager of assets and infrastructure services? Oh, sorry, environment and sustainability, sorry. Thank you, ma'am. Please state your name and your position.
Good morning, Kay Kavner, General Manager, Environment Sustainability.
Thank you. Just in relation to the report and the damage that was done and the required reconstruction works, walkways, pathways and so on, just in relation to the bridge itself, it talks about the Bradfield Bridge reconstruction. What's the actual damage to the bridge itself?
There's no actual damage to the bridge itself. It's erosion around the footings and the pylons into the riverbank. So it's essentially just referring to that as the place in which the works will be done on the riverbanks underneath the Bradfield Bridge. But the bridge itself is not damaged.
Yeah, that's how I read the report, but I was just a bit confused with the, the heading to that report. It appears that there's damage to the bridge. I just.
Yep.
But when we go back into, I want to finish the question, I might just suggest a slight change to that, CEO, just to clear that it's, there is no damage to the bridge itself.
Fair point. That's right. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Miss Kavner, just confirm it does say in the report that the funding for this is provided by the Queensland Reconstruction Authority? Can I just confirm?
That's correct, yes.
As long as we get it done.
It's fully funded through the Queensland Reconstruction Authority, yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Miss Kavner?
Sorry, Kay, was it both sides of the river too then?
No, this is just talking about the northern side of the river. So essentially on the Riverlink side of the river.
Right.
This particular work. Yep.
So on the CBD side, that's a different matter, different issue.
The River Heart side, yeah, that's a separate matter to this particular procurement process.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Miss Kavner.
Thank you.
Appreciate your response. I will move recommendations A through to D. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Martin. In speaking to this, the bike way that runs along the front of Riverlink was extensively damaged during the February twenty twenty two flooding, and the contract will allow for the work to be undertaken for demolition, disposal, earthworks, stabilisation on the riverbank and landscaping. You can see by the cost of over five million, five and a half million dollars, it's extensive work that's being done and funded by the Queensland Reconstruction Authority. It would be good to have this section of the Bremmer Riverbank opened again for community use and certainly appreciate the Australian and the Queensland governments for this joint funding through the Queensland Reconstruction Authority. And we thank them for their assistance. I'll open it for other commentary. Councillor Martin as the second, do you wish to make any comments?
No, I'd just like to reiterate that, ma'am, that, yeah, and at the moment it's somewhat of an eyesore too, just all being blocked off. So I look forward to that being reopened and potentially utilised. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion, councillor Tilly?
Yeah, just following my comments, could I suggest the, and I won't move it as an amendment because it may be acceptable to the mover and second, that the heading, but also the recommendation A, to change the words Riverlink and Bradfield Bridge reconstruction to reverse that to say reconstruction adjacent to Riverlink and Bradfield Bridge. I think that adjacent description covers that. Just to make it clear that it's not.
Reconstruction works.
Yeah, it's not reconstruction. There's no damage to the bridge. Just to read both in the heading, the subject heading.
Do you have a suggestion you're putting forward?
Yeah, the heading at the top and in recommendation A to read reconstruction Riverlink, adjacent to, I'll say that again, reconstruction adjacent to Riverlink and Bradfield Bridge.
I'll just double check with the CEO if there's any technical reason why that can't be the name of the contract and the procurement.
Don't believe so, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'm happy with it then. Councillor Martin, are you happy with it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we'll make sure that that's. Omented, thank you. Okay, you're happy with that. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Item seventeen is notices of motion and there are none. Item eighteen, questions on notice?
Mayor, if I can move in relation to item seventeen, whilst I note there's no notices of motion, formally, I move that the provision of these meeting procedures be suspended to enable the immediate consideration of an emerging matter in relation to the safety of children at Collingwood Park State School.
So I couldn't quite hear what you're saying. Sorry, could you repeat that?
I move that the provision of these meeting procedures be suspended to enable the immediate consideration of an emerging matter in relation to the safety of children at Collingwood Park State School.
Okay, so we've had that, I've put that, do we have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Martin, as a second to suspend these. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. So we're suspending them. And could you just put forward?
Yeah, just note.
What that is, so we can actually, so we know what we're looking at. So have you said something to the secretariat at all?
Yes, I circulated it to CEO councillors and the secretariat relating to the provision function and enforcement of the loading zone at the front of Collingwood Park State School on Borough Street, Collingwood Park. And the motion has circulated, three motions. The council immediately cease enforcement of the school drop-off pickup loading zone at the Collingwood Park State School pending a review of said enforcement activity. The council established a special temporary review panel to investigate and review the enforcement action taken by Ipswich City Council regarding the operation of the two minute loading zone, which operates as a school drop-off and pickup zone. And see that said special temporary review panel be chaired by the chairman of the Finance and Governance Committee members, and that members of the panel include the relevant divisional councillors and officers appointed by the CEO.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that motion? Councillor Madden is the second. So those A, B and C are live motions that this council is considering. And I do acknowledge that this motion has not gone through the normal process of, you know, a week's notice for review. But thank you very much for letting us know last night. I do appreciate that, councillor Antonelli. I do understand from the CEO, and she has written to us, to us all, that there are a number of legal matters and statutory authority matters in this. And I've had advice that we should go into closed session to discuss this. So I.
Happy to move that if you wish, ma'am.
I'll move that in accordance with section two, five, four, J three. E, legal advice obtained to local government or legal proceedings of other than the local government, including, for example, legal proceedings that may be taken or by the local government. And you're happy to second that, councillor Antonelli?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Put that to the vote. Those in favour of moving into closed session. Thank you. It's unanimous. So we're now going to closed session. So anyone who's. So we're now going to closed session, so anyone who's.
Thank you, welcome back. It's eleven fifty seven AM on the nineteenth of June twenty twenty five at the ordinary council meeting. We went into closed session. I'll have to check what time we did that, Vicky. We went to close session. Just letting people know that during that close session, we decided to go for an adjournment at eleven twenty two for ten minutes. And we came back at eleven forty seven. So we're going back to where we left off and there was a notice of, we're in suspended meeting procedures at the moment. There was a couple of recommendations put forward by councillor Antinelli. I think councillor Nellie wished to change, alter those?
Yes, if I may, as the mover, I'd like to withdraw the original motion, substitute it with the wording that you now have, which I now can't see on screen. I apologise for my absence, but if.
I'll read that out.
Read that out for me, thank you.
Yes, I'll just ask Vicky to scroll to that and I'll read out that. And that amended that you've given to the organisation is that the chief executive officer confer in a meeting between the divisional councillors and general manager corporate services and general manager planning and regulatory services to discuss the school safe parking programme at Collingwood Park State School. So you're moving that councillor Antinelli?
Correct.
Thank you. And a second for that. I'm just looking at the division three councillor. Would that be appropriate?
It was councillor Martin's idea, so I'm happy for him to second.
Okay, councillor Martin.
Yeah, more than happy.
Very much as the second, thank you. I'll open that up for discussion amongst the councils in particular councillor Antinelli as the mover. Do you wish to make commentary on this?
I think it's self explanatory and I think the collaboration of the councillors in coming to this motion.
Thank you very much councillor. Councillor Martin, do you wish to make any comments?
Yeah, I concur. It's self explanatory. Look forward to having healthy, robust debate and a good outcome.
Thank you. I'll open up for any other discussion. In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Antinelli, how do you vote?
Fairly, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I think we probably have to come out of suspend. We'll go back to meeting procedures because he's doing it for another purpose. So I'll move that we go back into meeting procedures. Do I have a second for that councillor Tully? All those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. Now, I believe you wish to move us back into suspending, suspending many procedures for another matter.
I'll move that so much of the meeting procedures policy be suspended to enable the immediate consideration of the following proposed motion. Quote, the council provide free electricity access to not for profit incorporated association and registered charity. Give our time incorporated for its weekly community event at the biggest rest Queen Street Goodna. Just, just want to make sure. I had sent something earlier. I just, they might, just want to double check if the wording appears because I had done.
So at the moment, we're just looking at suspending the meeting procedures?
Yeah, but I just want to read, see the proposed motion, which is part of the motion to suspend.
Okay.
The reason for the suspension. Could I just see what the committee clerk has, please? So it's not the motion I'm moving now, but it's stating the reason for it. Yeah, I'm happy with that. Thank you. That's great.
So would you, would you like to read it out just for the benefit of the public of what the, the reason for the, why you're requesting a suspension?
The reason to suspend the meeting procedures is to enable the immediate consideration of the following proposed motion. Quote, the council provide free electricity access to not for profit incorporated association registered charity. Give our time Inc. And that word give is the correct registered name with the state government for its weekly community event at the Diggers Rest Queen Street Goodna.
Thank you. So do we have a second for that suspending, suspension of standing orders? Councillor David Martin, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Antinelli, how do you vote on the suspension of the standing orders? Okay, thank you. So we've suspended standing orders. I'll head over to you councillor Tully. You should move a motion.
Yeah, I'll move that, that motion as read as part of the reason for the suspending the meeting procedures.
Do I have a second for that motion? Thank you councillor Martin. Councillor Tully, do you wish to speak to it?
Just briefly, this is a new organi-, it's not a brand new organisation. It's been providing this service at Goodna since the twenty sixth of April this year. It's every Thursday evening. They're providing meals for people who are in need and families who are in need. It's been doing that at Anala for a number of years. It's give our time incorporated. Incorporated in twenty twenty and became a registered charity in the following year. The ABC's even been out to cover this particular event, which is happening every Thursday and councillor Johnic was interviewed by them. Previously, there is electricity there and I organised probably twenty, over twenty years ago for the breast screen facility, which the state government facility there to get the, the power box there. It's a sealed box. It's used on ANZAC Day. It was used for the opening of the first of these weekly events at the Diggers Rest in, in, in April. There was just advice that I received and it's pretty through my staff without, yeah, coming from within the council that it said it was for ANZAC Day use only. No, it was breast screen originally, then ANZAC Day. It's not for public use, which we know because it's a sealed box, but I believe it can be opened remotely by a code. It says that it needs regular use without a council officer present poses a risk to the council and the, and the public. It's a small group. It's probably only got about thirty five, forty people there or so. I don't think there's any, any risk at all. It's been used, yeah, without a council officer being present, either with the breast screen facility or on ANZAC Day. And that happens at a lot of places around, you know, the city at parks and things like that. So I'm just asking. It is four weeks. I was intending to bring this up with the proper notice at, at the meeting in July, but there's going to be four of these Thursday night events between now and our next council meeting. So it's just to get this resolved. I think it's a pretty minor sort of matter. But hopefully, you know, for its homeless people and other needy people, it's, it's probably too late to be organised for this evening. But from next week, if this goes through, I'd be, they would be, yeah, Margarita who operates it is just a real gem of a person. Yeah, really truly is. And I'd just like this to go through to show that we, we support this sort of facility. Thank you.
There you go, councillor. Councillor Martin is the second. Do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I concur with councillor Tully. Me, sorry, that was wrong. I concur with councillor Tully. I think it's a bit of a stretch to have a council officer there just to supervise and getting power. I'm part of Ipswich Dutch Football and I know a number of sporting organisations, a couple of people who have access to the key for lights. And we're trusted, put lights on and turn them off at the end of it. And I don't really see any need for a council officer. And would certainly support the work of give our time, what they do in community and believe that they should have access to power for a couple of hours on a Thursday night. Fully supportive of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Doyle, you had your.
Thank you, ma'am. I just had a question for council officers, just what the process is in relation to this. As councillor Martin and councillor Tully have pointed out, right across Ipswich, my division three, for instance, we have community group review, neighbourhood watch, access electricity in Maculata Park for muscle and maculata carnival. Separately to that, most recently, the ANZAC Day service I did at One Mile, we, we also arranged that. I think the exception might be for some of those sporting groups is that they have that exclusive use arrangement in place with council and therefore there would be governance around that, including, you know, doing things safely and appropriately. I, I guess I'm just, the difference is with this group, it's new and we wouldn't, I'm assuming we don't have a permit or an exclusive use. She does have a permit.
Has a permit.
Okay, so my, my other question then for council, is there not provisions within, what is the policy and process currently for groups on an ad hoc basis to access power in a park? And I don't mean just anyone or for a family for a kid's birthday party. For community groups feeding our homeless.
Thank you. Catseye, I'll answer that question. Catse, you all, do you have that question?
Yeah, sure, thank you, mayor, um. I guess I don't really have an officer here that can speak to that, um it's a very operational matter.
The council always stands there.
Um happy to circulate the procedures afterwards, mayor, if that's okay.
Yeah, I guess my question was going to be, I raised the council, have you asked council officers yet to about the power and that's when you said?
Yes.
And they've said, no, you need two.
That's how I got the advice back, um they do have a permit, um it's only for a brief period, so it's not just an ad hoc sort of thing members of the public can just turn up and plug it in because it's a sealed box.
Yeah, no, a permit's a permit.
Yeah, and and um but and it wasn't made available on on the opening day, but not now. I don't think there is a policy that goes down to that detail, who can access an electricity meter box, um i- it's um.
If you put any council facility, normally it's the the key, there's usually some type.
A key or a code, I think they have a code now.
Yeah, I mean broadly speaking, we have arrangements between two of our council departments, um obviously our community cultural and economic development department in relation to community organisations liaison there, so uh and with our works in field services, so yeah, it it, you know, it varies across organisations depending on what the access is for and whether it's for a key or to switch on power, et cetera, et cetera, turn on lights, um there's a variety of arrangements, so um mayor, I'm I'm happy to follow up on on it.
I would say this is a very operational matter, um so I'm just keen to hear from the organisation as to why they said no. If that's what the, if that was the answer or that you have to have two people.
I I did, I I'd gone through my my electorate staff, the staff here, so so I'm I'm not going back to the very source, but that was the the written advice, you know, that that I had. Um but I don't think it's based on a policy, but it might be an opportunity. Do we need a policy for other other situations like this? Um more than just ad hoc sort of arrangements, but but something that's irregular, this this would be fifty two times in in a year. Um and it it's in a um, it's not an enclosed area, but it's a secluded area, there there's virtually no other um yeah, persons attending during that period.
I mean, my other thing, as we discussed earlier, you can always escalate things to to myself, so we could have that discussion with the CEO as well.
Yep.
Or has it been escalated to yourself previously, so it hasn't been escalated to the CEO yet, it's coming to a meeting?
Hmm, I'm happy to ask the manager of executive services to ask the council liaison officer to provide the advice that has been given in this particular instance and to review it and that why the need for an officer to attend was there, we're certainly not wanting to be, you know, um using precious council officer time and resources funded by ratepayers if it's not needed, so very happy to review this this case, um mayor.
Thank you.
Could I just add, mayor, please?
Please do.
Yeah, with the breast screening, they didn't have an officer present, with ANZAC Day, they didn't have an officer present, with the opening on the twenty sixth of April, they didn't have an officer present, I think it might be, oh how will I say this, I don't think it's necessary.
I know, I guess, as I told you to us, what I've seen is that we're taking up valuable time at a council meeting and it hasn't been escalated to the CEO, it hasn't been escalated to myself, and I think we could have dealt with it in a much easier way. That's just my my view, I have no issues with supporting it, but yeah, I just think there are other more timely ways of of dealing with it. Um are there any other discussion points on on that, councillor Tully, do you wish to write a reply in summing up before we go to the vote?
No, I think we've had a genuine discussion and I give it, given the last matter took a fair while, I'd just hopefully like to wrap this up.
Okay, thank you, in that case, I put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand, it's unanimous in the room, councillor Antinelli, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Uh thank you, um we're now at item, sorry, sorry, stop, we have to go back to we now have to resume meeting, I'm sorry, so now I'll go back to, I'll move a motion that we resume meeting procedures, all those in favour? It's unanimous in the room, councillor Antinelli, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you, that's unanimous. Item is questions on notice and there are, I will actually probably took some notes during the meeting. Um just in closing, I just wanted to um reiterate um that myself and all the councils have an obligation under Local Government Act, and in particular myself as the mayor under section twelve four. I have an obligation to lead and manage the CEO in order to achieve a high quality administration of the city council. And that includes the obligation to conduct meetings in a in a orderly way and ensure that agenda items have been given proper consideration so that all of us in this room can make informed, you know, considered decisions for our community. The City Council's Good Governance Guide states that the mayor is responsible for facilitating and managing the conduct of participants at council ordinary meetings by keeping to the agenda, ensuring that debate is focused on strategic matters, ensuring all participants' views are expressed. And we all have an obligation under the Code of Conduct to strive at all times to maintain the strength of the trust and confidence and integrity of the local government and avoid any action which may diminish its standing, authority and dignity. So I say as a chair, just note that councillor Mads is leading, as a chair that I do wish to stick to the agenda endeavour to focus on strategic matters, and I think we all work very hard on that. I just want to rear it to the councillors, you know, today we did suspend standing orders on two matters that I think were operational. Um that you're welcome to escalate to the CEO or to myself or to both. And so we can work together, I think, for a better outcome from our community, um that would be greatly appreciated, that will help us adhere to the local government and certainly help me um adhere to the obligations that I have as the mayor of the city and the good order of meetings. And on that, I'll close the meeting at twelve thirteen, thank you very much.